Gary. Gary, there's your gavel there. There you go.[12.49][13.34](LAUGHTER)
Wow. I haven't used this before. Welcome. My name is Gary Yanholdt. I'm Vice President of the Board. John Laverty, the current President, is doing a parent responsibility at Washington High School today.
So I will be running this meeting. Looks like we have a roomful of people. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. The first thing we need on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion? To approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, April 20, 2016, Board of Education be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second.
And this is a roll call vote?
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Westerkamp?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Vice President Yanholdt?
Aye. And the first thing on our agenda is a public hearing for Hi-Waith Security Improvement Project. I don't believe we have anyone that is... Do we have a...
At this time, you would ask for some people if they were interested in speaking at the public hearing to come forward. But nobody has filled out a form for that.
No one's filled out. If there's anyone that would like to address or has questions about this item, they could step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Request written. Were there any written comments?
No, there were no written comments received regarding this public hearing.
There were no... Okay. Thank you. And we had no written comments that came in on that. Moving to the Superintendent's Report at this time.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so we were honored to have Holocaust survivor Magda Brown in the district last week. She spoke to students at Jefferson, Kennedy, and Washington High Schools, sharing a very powerful and important story. Brown was 17 years old in 1944 when she was deported from her home in Hungary on one of the final transports to Auschwitz with her entire family. Her parents died in gas chambers. In 1946, she came to America and settled in Chicago. Each high school presentation was followed by a question-and-answer session with students, and I had the privilege of actually getting to meet her on Sunday night. And pretty amazing person. I also had a chance to take part in the interdenominational event that same night. And so it's really pretty amazing to hear stories firsthand from someone that survived the Holocaust. So also other news. Washington High School's been named the top-ranked Iowa high school, and Kennedy is the third-ranked Iowa school. On the Washington Post's 2016 List of America's Most Challenging High Schools, both district high schools have qualified for the list since 2000. The Washington Post takes the number of advanced placement in international baccalaureate tests given at a school the previous school year and divides by the number of seniors who graduated in May or June. More good news about our high schools for the fourth year in a row. Kennedy has earned the top spot on the U.S. News &amp; World Report's Best High Schools ranking for the state of Iowa. Kennedy is ranked nationally in the top 3% of all public high schools based on our placement. These rankings compare student performance on state tests to the rest of the state, evaluating whether subgroups of students, racial and economic groups, were exceeding their peers in the state, the school's graduation rate, and finally, the quantity and quality of student performance on AP exams. Last week, we hosted the Iowa Department of Education Director Ryan Wise and representatives from the Council of Chief State School Officers. The Council of Chief State School Officers is essentially the group that is all of the directors for the 50 states and the Department of Defense, and I think Puerto Rico as well. Anyway, so that's CCSSO. They saw an overview of the district's teacher leadership system and innovative programming. During the visit, guests sat in on a leadership team meeting at Taft Middle School and observed the co-planning session at the Johnson Steam Academy. They also had the opportunity to visit with students and teams at Iowa Big. And so I had a chance to take part in that. And it's always great to have a chance to showcase amazing work that's underway in Cedar Rapids with not only the state director, but also with a national audience. And so they were pretty impressed by the work that's underway on those two fronts. For the 21st consecutive year, the district's received a certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International. This award reflects the district's continuing commitment to fiscal integrity and high-quality financial reporting. So congratulations to our business services and accounting staff members for that award. And you probably just saw us just scurrying in here. We just left tonight's meeting... Or tonight's... Prior to tonight's meeting, we enjoyed the annual District Recognition of School Volunteers. Thank you to the students from Hoover Elementary who sang their delightful entertainment. They did "We Are the World." You guys familiar with "We Are the World"? That's nice. I had a sort of picture of Stevie Wonder kind of doing his part. But the kids were awesome. It was amazing. And we actually heard them sing at the State of the District event, I think, back in December as well. So congratulations to all of our outstanding building volunteers. We're pleased now to share a video celebrating school volunteers and introducing this year's Outstanding District Volunteer.
School volunteers help to expand a student's learning by their involvement. Thanks to our volunteers, students receive individual attention and the chance to develop better self-esteem. These caring role models are passionate about education, and they're committed to helping students. More than 6,700 school volunteers contributed nearly 144,000 hours during the last school year. The learning environment is enriched at every grade level and through every volunteer outreach by these parents, retirees, high school and college students, business and industry professionals, and other community members. We thank each of our education volunteers for their dedicated contributions of time and talent as we proudly introduce our 2016 Outstanding District Volunteer and Governor's Volunteer Award recipient Kurt Noack, or as he's known to everyone at Nixon Elementary School, Grandpa Kurt.[407.11][409.14](LAUGHTER)
They like to greet me in the hallway. They like to tap my head. And I just like seeing the smiles on kids because sometimes I can see that they are stressed out, that they might have something that happened at home that they brought to school. And I like to try to help them put a smile on their face.
When you have a volunteer that shows up almost every day and spends all day with us, that's what I would call the most awesome volunteer ever.
Very good.
He dedicates his time to be with our students. He plays games with them. He reads with them. He has lunch with the students. The kids are so excited to see Grandpa Kurt. They will walk down the hall. They're high-fiving him, hugging him. Grandpa Kurt's just part of the Nixon family.
Oh, this is the money game?
Yeah.
All right.
We have many students in our building who do not have positive male role models in their life. And so we look at this as an opportunity for those students to have one more male adult in their life.
It's important for them to see how a person reacts, how a male reacts, to them and to other students, and how they react to learning new things and learning also a little bit of discipline and how they should conduct themselves at school.
Sometimes Grandpa Kurt lets the kids be sillier than maybe the teacher would or another staff member because he is a grandparent.
Who wants to dance?
I do.
All right. So I think it's important to de-stress. De-stress from the day. De-stress from maybe something that's happening at home. De-stress from learning at school and have a little fun, get a little silly. Freeze. Go.
We come in from recess, and he's sitting there having lunch with some students that just really need somebody to be interested in them.
What have you been doing today? How is your day?
So good.
Your day is so good?
Making them feel important, that they're with him, and it's their day to be with him, and they're just important and just makes them feel good. And it just helps kids as they're reading with them, just to give them that little extra boost and know that somebody's really interested with them and enjoys reading with them and being with them.
Kids require lots of needs today. And when you have students in groups, in classrooms of 20 to 30 students, they require attention.
Come on up. I've got one here for you. And here is your outline on Amelia Earhart.
This is an opportunity that we can provide by having a volunteer come in, that that student, on that particular day, that particular time, gets just a little bit of extra individual attention that perhaps they might not get otherwise.
I do not have... Or did not have children when I was married and do not have grandchildren. It fills a huge hole in my life that I've never realized I had before. And now I realize that there was that hole, and I enjoy interacting with them and making them feel good about themselves and about their future and about their education.
I don't think he's here. I was scanning the crowd. He was just at the event, but I don't think...
He had to leave.
Okay. Okay. So with that, I want to make one clarification about... I think several of you are here tonight to talk about the teacher librarian thing. I would guess that's what that stack of green sheets is about. So in my superintendent comments, I would like to just frame up what's happening with the teacher librarian situation, just to contextualize what's underway in Cedar Rapids schools and what has happened in Cedar Rapids schools over the last several years. So all work has value. And we created positions in Cedar Rapids schools over the years because we believed the work had value and it needed to be done. That's why we had positions. Over the last five years, we have reduced positions such that we have 150 fewer staff positions this year than we did five years ago, and about 50-50 mix of certified staff and support staff. Along that same... So because of what happened with state funding for next year, and not to blame, this is just the reality of the situation. Because of what happened with state funding for next year, we are in the situation where we're going to have to reduce an additional $2.3 million to $2.8 million, depending on how you look at that circumstance. And what's important to keep in mind about that $2.3 million to $2.8 million is it's not the first $2.3 million to $2.8 million. It's millions 18... Well, arguably 19 and 20 and into 21 million over the last five to six years. So really, we're into circumstance now. And to give you some context for what that has meant in our classrooms, and I'll talk about teaching staff, although what I would say is this, and I don't want us to lose this part of the narrative. This has impacted all groups. So teachers, in terms of certified staff, our administrative costs are reduced. Our classified... This is going to impact custodians for next year, but this has impacted basically about every corner of our organization over the last five to six years. And I bring all that up to say this. As it relates to the teacher librarian situation in particular, eight or so years ago, we had essentially a teacher librarian at every single one of our elementaries. Okay? Now, teacher librarians cover two and oftentimes three with the support of media secretaries. And this isn't unique to the teacher librarian circumstance. This is true of elementary physical education teachers, elementary music teachers, elementary art teachers. A couple of years back, maybe it's two or three, and of course, I wasn't here for the history of some of this. I just hear it sort of as it's been told to me. We reduced media associate support at the middle schools. And what also happened a couple of years at our middle schools, a couple of years ago, is we transitioned to teachers teaching six periods out of eight to teaching seven periods out of eight. This coming school year at our high schools, we've gone to a unified schedule for our high schools. And essentially, what has happened for a full-time high school teacher for next year is... You could kind of fuss with the details of this, but it has essentially gone from teaching five periods out of seven to teaching six periods out of seven next year and having to make difficult decisions through all of that. So I say all of that to say thank you for coming tonight. I'm interested to hear your comments and your perspectives. But I think it's important, just to sort of clarify, this is about a teacher librarian conversation, I think, tonight, and I respect and understand that. And I think a lot of this, though, if you look at what's happened with school funding over the last five to six years, it's impacted Cedar Rapids schools in a number of interesting and important ways. So with that, my superintendent comments unless there's...
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Are there any other board reports? As the governmental liaison, I do want to do just a quick summation. It looks like the legislation will wind up this week. Hopefully, they won't do any more damage, but we will wait and see to the fall of the gavel. To back up what Dr. Buck said, about the only thing that I can say as this session wraps up, you know, where do we go here? If you look at the trend, we've had downward funding over the last five years. And if you were to connect the dots, it looks like it would go again lower next year. And so where do we cut? What do we do at that point? All I'd ask is, people that are listening, people in the audience, that you remember in November, and we have an opportunity to voice our concerns and our opinions and the direction we think this state should be going at the ballot box. And I will just close with that. Again, we thank you all for being here. It is now time for public comment. A reminder, and this becomes difficult from the board, that because of the Code of Iowa, we cannot respond to your comments. And it seems... It becomes rather awkward because we certainly would like to, but we can't. We'll take notes. If there are further questions or if you have further information, we'll direct the administration to get back with you with those. You have five minutes. Would also just ask if you could try not to repeat. If you listen to the comments, try not to repeat the same. If you could bring... So we can have as variety of comments. It would be more... It'll help as far as the time. We have other things we're going to be doing soon. So at that point, and excuse me if I murder your names, but Emily Palmershaim?
Palmershaim.
Thank you.
Emily, when you get to the mic, would you please... Would you say your...
Over here?
Yeah.
Please say your name and address for us.
Hi, my name is Emmy Palmershaim. My address of my... Where I live?
Yeah.
Okay. 255 13th Street Northwest.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Emmy Palmershaim, current 12th grader at Jefferson High School. I am here, like many are, to discuss the fact that we are losing our librarian. A lot of people are here to condemn our principal, or the school board, or some other authority figure, anyone to place blame upon. Regarding our librarian, she's great. She's kind, considerate, resourceful, and genuinely concerned about the well-being of our students. It's a shame that her position is being cut. With that in mind, however, each school in the district needs to cut four full-time employees. That's the reality of the situation. Four people. Four friends. Four people we know. So to those of you who are here today to argue that we need a librarian, I applaud you for speaking up in a forum for your voices. This is more than can be said for many people. But I pose a question. Who then do we cut? Who or what do we value enough to sacrifice if we spare this position? Some different options are posed on the comments section of the Don't Cut Cedar Rapids School Librarians petition page. Some people suggest we cut another teacher. Some suggest a teacher in the fine arts wing. Many suggest a coaching position. And these are valid options. If we cut another teacher, classes in that program get bigger and less individualized. Keeping our class sizes smaller ensures individualized attention. Jefferson is home to a lot of at-risk students who need this individualized attention to stay on track and feel that their teachers care and invest in them as students and as people. If we cut a teacher in the fine arts wing or a coach, we lose the accessibility to the opportunities in that program. Fine arts programs and athletic endeavors create a sense of camaraderie, teamwork, and community in high school, where all three of those things are not always perceived as being present by a high school student. Nobody wants our librarian to be cut. And nobody wants a school without a librarian, but presently, it seems to be the lesser of many evils. We are lucky to have the library we do have. And while the resources of our librarian will not be there, the resources of the material will be, and we're lucky for that. This is a burdening situation to be in. Many people are angry, hurt, confused. However, I am here to offer up the easiest solution to keep librarians in our schools. Vote. While the predicament we find ourselves in is upsetting, it couldn't have come with more exigence. Many people are worried about the results of the presidential election, but the truth is this: The country won't fall apart with any of these candidates at the helm. I wish, though, people were as passionate and concerned about state elections. Our governor, senators, and House of Representatives affect us as Iowans more on a daily basis than any president ever has or ever will. And yet, we find ourselves to be unwilling of change in our local and state government at the mercy of tradition and familiarity. For the past five years, teachers have been cut from our district every single year. We did not, as a collective, proactively vote new government in to change the things and the way they were going. If you did consciously make a vote for someone that is currently serving in the local or state office with education as one of your focuses and priority, I'm sorry to tell you that they failed you. They failed us all. The choice to get rid of our librarian was not a choice made at Jefferson. It was a choice made in Des Moines. And it does nothing to retroactively protest or complain. We need to proactively put people in local and state offices that not only state that they care about education, but will act and vote in a manner that shows that they care about education. Thank you.
Emily, thank you very much for your comments.
Don't you think she should drop the mic? I mean, that was awesome. Proud to be a Jayhawk. Well, I don't know why I said that.
And I'm proud that... The product of our district. She's... She did a marvelous job, and I guess I'll get in trouble if I go any farther. So Caitlin Brown.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Brown. I live in Cedar Falls at 2101 Round Street. That's R-O-W-N-D for anyone taking notes. And while I currently work at UNI as a librarian there, I'm speaking primarily as a former teacher librarian who went through, I would say, a new position every year I was at my previous school outside of Iowa. So I'm very familiar with the exigencies and situations that come down. A couple of things that I just wanted to emphasize today are in an environment of constant cuts and constant rearrangements at schools, constant re-envisionings of what classes will look like for our students and for our teachers. Teacher librarians are in a truly unique position to serve as a hub amidst all of that change, to help coordinate what's going on between different subject areas and different divisions, and to make sure that at the end of four years, students have received an education that is somewhat well-rounded and supported by the best materials they can find certainly, but also the intellectual capacity that they bring and the information literacy skills that they teach to students. To get here this evening, I had to find a building that Google Maps claims doesn't exist at an address that's given in different places on different parts of the school board's website. And I'm very grateful to the information literacy skills that I have for helping me to navigate that situation. So when I say that teacher librarians prepare our students both for higher education and for their workaday adult lives, that's what I mean. And I submitted that in a comment on the petition as well. I do understand that this is a tough situation, and I encourage you as the board, but also individual schools, to think of ways in which they can perhaps maximize the use that they're making of teacher librarians and of the particular skills and expertise they bring to each building. And I'll keep my comments short. I just wanted to add at the end that librarians, I hope, are well-known for advocating for ourselves at the state and federal levels as well. We will continue to do that and have done our best, I think, to speak up in favor of funding for school libraries, mandatory positions for teacher librarians, and other things that we feel are essential. I invite you, in your life as private citizens, to join us in advocating for these things. Whether or not the funding is there every year in every district, this is a long and ongoing conversation for us, and I hope that you will support us in that journey. We will certainly continue to do our job to try to get districts the support that they need to keep all successful programs running. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your taking time and the distance of traveling to provide us with that insight. Valerie Eilers.
Valerie Eilers from 28559 240th Street in Reinbeck, Iowa. I am a shared teacher librarian with two districts. Gladbrook-Reinbeck, which is pretty much infamous right now with what's going on there, and Grundy Center. And the programs that I used to do with so many students and teachers have been had to drop because I've been cut to do... My programs have been cut, and I'm shared with two districts. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your esteemed honors of the high school. Knowing that librarians help test scores, as research states, and I have a book here that shows a lot of research that shows without teacher librarians and strong programming, your test scores will plummet. And so I'd like to also congratulate the teacher librarians for helping make your high schools so esteemed. I have a letter that was written from the American Library Association, from the two national presidents. Sari Feldman, who is the American Library Association President, and also Leslie Preddy, who's the American Association of School Librarians. And I am representing the Iowa Association of School Librarians. I am on their executive board. As Presidents of the American Library Association and American Association of School Librarians, we are deeply concerned about the proposed cuts to high school librarians in Cedar Rapids. Now, more than ever, school librarians play a vital role in preparing students for success in an increasingly complex information landscape. School librarians are the heart of vibrant learning communities, and where many have. A school librarian is a certified teacher who provides a continuum of information literacy instruction, an information expert who curates a collection of resources that are tailored to a school's learning objectives and its students' unique needs, and a technology specialist who develops ethical and capable digital citizens. School librarians are also essential partners to their colleagues, bringing instructional resources, technology, and literacy tools to the curriculum as well as professional development to teachers and staff. The newly reauthorized federal education statute, the Every Student Succeeds Act, includes provision that specifically supports school library programs, school librarians, and the role they play in academic achievement, literacy, and digital citizenship. This critical role of school librarians is underscored by the recent announcement from the U.S. Department of Education that half of all innovative approaches to literacy grants will be awarded to school libraries. Cedar Rapids Community School District has high school library programs of which it can be proud. Your school librarians have literally set the standards for statewide K-12 library programs. They are leaders in state and national professional organizations, and they have been recognized for excellence in teaching and curriculum development. Furthermore, they have secured grant funding and partnerships that bring additional resources to students and staff. With a track record of strong programs, your school librarians are well-positioned as partners in developing ESSA-aligned plans for the district's literacy, digital literacy, and community learning initiatives. More than 60 studies across the nation provide clear and consistent evidence that student achievement is higher in school with certified school media specialists. With the state's emphasis on reading and literacy, librarians are an essential partner to supporting the district's literacy initiatives. They build a school-wide culture of reading and lifelong learning and nurture the interests that lead students to read independently. The elimination of some high school librarians will leave the district without a fully articulated K-12 library program. It will leave library collections without the professional management that keeps them relevant and current. It will also leave some students in the district behind their peers, less prepared to transition to post-secondary education and into the workforce. It's an equity issue. The return on investment in school libraries is clear. While the elimination of school librarian positions might seem like the answer to current budget challenges, the long-term cost to the students in your district will outweigh any short-term savings. We urge the Cedar Rapids Board of Education to withdraw the proposed cuts to school librarians. Sincerely, Sari Feldman, President of the American Library Association, and Leslie B. Preddy, American Association of School Librarians. And you might have a wonderful collection, but if you don't have a teacher librarian there to help students navigate it and help staff find connections with it, it will sit and collect dust in queue.
Thank you, Valerie. Again, also for taking time and traveling the distance to provide that. And I don't know if you provide... We have the letter. The board members here have that letter. So thank you. Nicole? Do we have a Nicole? I'll let you say your last name.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Gulager, and I live at 707 Forest Street in Parkersburg. I am here representing the small rural schools. I am a K-12 teacher librarian at Green Mountain Garwin, about 65, 70 miles from here. And as a K-12 teacher librarian, like all teacher librarians, at the high school level, we teach research skills, we help with homework, we teach how to have a safe online presence, how to copyright, how to use information in a safe way, digital citizenship. We are connected with all K-12 teacher, or in the high school, we are connected with all high school teachers and connect our collections with their curriculum. We match up what they need to help those students be as successful as they can be. Not only that, we are mentors to the students. We are a place that the students come to when they need, just a safe place, a place to feel comfortable. And the state requires not only teacher librarians to have a teaching background, but to also have a master's. And that is the only position in the school besides an administrator that the state requires. Clearly, we are more than just the keeper of the books, as it used to be. And I guess I'm here to support the teacher librarians, not, I don't know either one personally, but I don't want to make this about a person's paycheck or a person's personal career, but this decision needs to be about the students and the students alone. And to have one teacher librarian cover several high schools and that many students, if we can decide that this is the best for the students, then I think we would all support it. But clearly, having that expertise in-house in that building to help those students should be what we want the most. The goal is to have the students as well-prepared for the world as we can have, and I think the decision needs to come down to what is best for the students. And I know that's a tough decision to make in hard economic times, but I do think that keeping those teacher librarians on staff will be what will benefit the students the most. So, thank you.
Beth Jansen.
Good evening. I'm Beth Jansen. I'm from 1014 Fifth Avenue in Ackley, Iowa. I might have won the award for the farthest distance, I don't know for sure. And I would drive three more hours to come just to give my two cents, I guess, of the things that I've learned over the last couple of years being in the high school. Primarily, before, three years ago, I was primarily in the elementary and the middle schools. And three years ago, I slowly migrated into, you know, with my administration, that I really needed to be with the high school. I got in there. I started teaching a high school class on web design, on digital citizenship. They run the website, the activities website for our district. And now that I'm three years in, I now have students that are contacting me for things like, you know, letters of recommendation. Your class is where I learned how to live in this world. You're the one class that I took the entire time that taught me how to be in the business world, how to be in an employee situation or a work spot situation. And I'm not saying that the other teachers weren't doing their job. That's not my goal here. I don't mean that. But what I mean is, our job as the 21st century skills experts, and the tie-in with all of the other things that they do, is teaching these kids how to live in the real world. And I think when you're still in high school, you don't realize you're learning those things. If I asked my senior, if I asked those kids that have been out for three years, "When you were a senior, did you know that you were learning those things?" Nope. I thought it was all crazy. I thought you were crazy, and I thought what you were teaching me was crazy. But as soon as I got out into college, I realized, oh my gosh, that's what I need to do. That's how that works. That's how my databases work in my college library. That's how I collaborate with other people to be a good employee. Those kinds of things is what we're there for. We're easy because we're quiet, I guess. And we don't rush out from the rooftops our expertise until it gets to this situation, and that's unfortunate. So I just ask that you think about those kinds of things that, just because high school kids don't realize our value, doesn't mean that, once they're gone, they don't reflect and realize what they've taken from having a licensed media specialist, teacher librarian, whatever your district calls us, that helped guide them with all of their core classes, tying it together, teaching them those 21st century skills, and taking it on with them. You lose that tie, that person, and you're losing the whole equation. So I just ask that you look somewhere deeper, in a different direction. As Nicole said, we don't stand up here because of a person's paycheck. We stand up here because it really does matter to the students. I mean, it truly, if you would have told me 10 years ago, I would have been like, oh, library, okay. But once I went and I got my license, and I am a totally different teacher, I'm a totally different instructor, and I'm a totally different person in the library, because I know the value now that I've seen it. So I just ask you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Anderson.
My name is Jan Anderson. I live at 2085 Timber Creek Drive, Marion. First, I'd like to extend my appreciation to you as members of the board. I'm here to speak on behalf of the teacher librarians in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. We are concerned first and foremost about how our high school students and staff will be impacted by the decision of the Kennedy and Jefferson principles to eliminate their teacher librarians. As many students have already asked, how can you have a school library without a librarian? Almost 1,300 people have signed an online petition put together by everylibrary.org to ask that you reconsider this decision. Some of those people have expressed quite well what we as teacher librarians know and believe about school librarians. The following are a few quotes from that survey. "Removing librarians doubles the work on teachers who have neither the time nor the specialized skills to accurately guide students in developing the critical library research skills that they will need to succeed. Librarians touch the lives of every student in the school, provide valuable service, knowledge, and technology literacy skills so necessary in the online world. Please do not cut these positions that mean so much to students." A college librarian wrote, "College readiness for our high school students includes strong information skills taught by certified teacher librarians. College faculty need students to be prepared, and cutting librarians in K-12 can be detrimental." How will your high school students be prepared for the rigorous research they will need in college? Having access to the internet does not equal access to vetted resource materials. The library is the greatest equalizer for the entire student population. First, taking away the librarians is not a good long-term solution to budget issues. It will have lasting negative impacts on a school library program that was once recognized as the best in the nation. Additionally, equity is another issue. How can we deny students full access to library resources at some buildings and not at others? Why did the district give the principals the authority to eliminate a district program that so deeply impacts all students in the building? This move also puts in question the district's compliance with having a K-12 library program. While it is true that the state requires each district to only have one certified teacher librarian, is that what you are willing to settle for? As one writer stated, "Cutting teacher librarians may save you money now, but hurt your students in the future." Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Trey M. Wright.
Hi, my name is Trey Wright. I am from 1005 11th Street Northwest. I've come to talk about our school librarians and how it benefits us. So, I'm from Jefferson High School, and I use my library almost every day. I can't say the same for other students, but I know, as well as others do, libraries are used quite often. Whether it's going into the library or going onto online for the eBooks, which our librarian provides for us and won't be there next year, it's used. Without our librarian, we pretty much wouldn't have the online tools and different things like that that we would need. She provides the information, and say I were to forget my password to get onto my school login, which I do all the time, I have to go to her for her to change it so I can get back on. Otherwise, then I really can't use the online tools. When I go to the library, I feel safe, honestly, because it's an open area, there's books everywhere. I like books. And there's always people sitting at the tables, talking, doing homework. They either have a laptop or just a piece of paper and pencil. She helps us find books easily, because sometimes it's difficult, especially with, like, nonfiction. The numbers get confusing. And then, say, a teacher needs help with something online, or help with finding a different online source, who's going to be there for them? Because some teachers, not to be rude or anything, aren't very online smart. And then they ask us how to do it, especially with subs. They always ask us about the smart boards, and we don't know anything about them, so... And there's other ways that we could cut and still meet what we need to. Like, my school, we have five Spanish teachers. I feel like we could maybe double those classes instead of having to cut our librarian. So, thank you.
Trey, thanks for coming out this evening. Thank you for the student perspective.
You can leave that with me.
You can leave that with our secretary. Thank you. Mason Colom. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mason Colom. I'm a junior at Jefferson High School. And this is going to ripple through all of Cedar Rapids. I remember when I was a child, I was reading one of the kids' almanacs, and I read a statistic. Iowa has a literacy rate of 99%. To me, that was astounding. I was so proud to live in a state that valued education that much. And these budget cuts are just disheartening to me. In my pockets, I have keys to a car that I and my parents own. On this keychain, I have a library card. Other students don't have that. I'm one of the very, very lucky few who does. And cutting librarians, cutting teachers, that's taking away from those kids who don't. They can't afford to have that taken away. I understand that decisions need to be made, and those decisions aren't easy. It started with budget cuts happening in legislature, and then students, and then teachers had to make a decision, and those teachers had to be cut. I understand that. But this creates a gap, and I wonder how and when that gap will be filled. As Dr. Buck has said, these budget cuts haven't been happening just this year. They've been happening year after year after year. Teachers are being forced to take six classes and teach six classes instead of the five they used to. This means that Jefferson High School is cutting their extended learning study hall periods. These are periods when students can go to teachers and ask questions, they can ask for help on work. We're losing that. We're losing our librarians. We're losing so many things. And it's scary, as a student, knowing how that's going to affect us, because we rely on that. We rely on our teachers as role models, as supporters, as people we can turn to. And we're being told we can't turn to them now. There's a gap that needs to be filled, and it belongs to all of us, the responsibility, to fill that gap, to go and write to Congress, to vote, to see what changes we can make before it's too late. I urge you to email your House Representative for the state of Iowa, toddtaylor@toddd.taylor t-a-y-l-o-r at iowa, all lowercase, dot legis, l-e-g-i-s, dot gov. He's one of the few people who can make a difference. But you can too. Please, talk to him. See what you can do for our community, for us, for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and remember all of that when you turn 18. Okay, please. Catherine Rogers.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Rogers, 2675 Tech Drive in Bettendorf, Iowa. And I am the president of the Iowa Association of School Librarians. So I'm coming to you on behalf of the librarians, obviously. Stephen Cresson, professor and noted author, states, "What do students need in order to succeed?" The latest research insists that they need strong library programs. There's one clear and consistent finding that supports our research. A school library media program would have strong computer networking, full-time staff, and a library media specialist, full-time, in order to get what we all want, higher student achievement. The news of Cedar Rapids cutting school librarians has generated a whirlwind on social media. The Facebook page dedicated to this situation alone is full of outcries from past and present students of Becky Johnson and Wendy Ziegler. The following two posts stood out to me especially. The first one, "Becky Johnson taught me everything I know when it comes to finding sources, citing, and anything else that has to do with using media for papers. She is the reason why I succeed at the college level." The second post, "Wendy Ziegler provided me with a safe space when I was bullied. I probably wouldn't be alive if the librarian hadn't been there for me, and I am not the only one. I'm not the only one." The impact of school libraries is evident. We, the licensed librarians in our schools, meet the challenges of our profession head-on and embrace them with heart and dedication. The Iowa Department of Education vision for school librarians and our libraries clearly states at best, Iowa's best schools are the ones that have library programs that engage the entire school community to elevate the learning experience for all. Teacher librarians are uniquely prepared and strategically placed to teach, lead, connect, collaborate, maximize, champion, and nurture our students. Should we not uphold our state beliefs and our educational expectations then? IASL recommends that you rescind the proposed cuts for your school librarians and our sisters and brothers in that. Thank you.
Our members have your letter that you wrote, and thank you so much for your time and your travel. That is all of the green slips that I have, but is there anyone else that would like to make comment? If you will. Just state your name and address, please, from the record.
Jackie Kepler, 897 Peralta Road in Springville. I'm a newly hired media specialist, not a librarian, media specialist, I say, at Erskine. And when I read about the proposal to eliminate the position of a librarian at Jefferson and Kennedy, I was flabbergasted, because my media specialist has been so instrumental in teaching me what I need to know to be successful in my job. And as it continued to read about, oh, we'll just have the media secretary at those high schools still be the one who's checking out books and having materials be made available. It's so much more than, that librarian does so much more than just check out books and keep the materials. You know, who's going to be the resource for that media secretary to ensure the students have what they need to be successful? And I think you're eliminating a position without making an educated And I think you're eliminating a position without, um, making an educated decision. I wonder about the principles of, of those schools, if they've sat in and watched a librarian on her day-to-day duties, kind of like a, a stay-at-home mom and the invisible things that we do. Um, and, you know, we have to jump up and down to say, no, but I do this, and I do this, and I do this, and I do this. The students are gonna miss out. And I, every time we get down to these budget cuts, I think we get short-sighted on what is best for students. And, you know, not having a librarian at all at those two high schools, that I just think is, is a really short-sighted decision. So, please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. I see another hand.
Thank you, Vice President Ann Halt, for giving me the opportunity. I've been sitting out in the hall, listening to all you very wonderful, bright and articulate people.
Don't forget your name.
And it makes me so proud. Kathy Ulrich, 1436th Street. I get carried away passionately. Southeast in Cedar Rapids. And all of you are right. Everybody in this room that has spoken tonight, including people sitting up here on the dais, you're all correct. Hard choices, sad choices, um, great impacts. There is one other thing, though. Gary mentioned it, and, and you all need to think about this, and I'm, I'm sure many of you do. But the biggest impact that you can have, you're here tonight, and you're making your voices heard in this public forum, but there are other public forums where you can be heard, and there are other ways that you can have an impact, and that's to get out there and support legislative candidates who support our education funding and our education agenda all over the state of Iowa. And that's how I spend a lot of my days in retirement as a volunteer, going out and looking for those opportunities, going to the legislature and lobbying, contacting people in the legislature. I'm sure there are many of you probably in here that I don't even know about that are doing that, but if you're not, you need to start. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Again, I wanna make sure that, I know a lot of you have come out, and, uh, wanna make sure you have an opportunity to speak if you so wish, so I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to give comment? Thank you all for, uh, for coming out. Thanks so much for the, for the comments. Our administrative staff and Dr. Buck will look over them, and if there's anything, any follow-up reply, we'll certainly get them out to you. Uh, at this time, we'll move, continue on with the agenda. A word to the consent agenda is, does anyone, any board member have an item that they would like more information or would like to pull? Not seeing any response, so, uh, at this time, I think we need a motion, right?
So this requires a motion and a second, because of the personnel report?
Right, because of the personnel report, a motion and a second. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, this is a roll call vote because of the personnel report.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Vice President Ann Halt?
Aye. Uh, at this time, uh, we'll go into administration. We have a, an approval for a resolution. Steve?
Thank you, Vice President Ann Halt, Board of Education Superintendent Buck. This is really a, a good news piece, and I'm here to say that, uh, the market was very good for the Cedar Rapids Community School District today, the bond market. Uh, we had a, um, savings that we estimated at our March board meeting in the neighborhood of, just a little south of a million dollars, on the interest rates that we would save on a refinancing, uh, bond issuance. And today, with the sale that occurred at 1:00, we have a 1.25 million dollar savings in, uh, interest costs for this bond issuance. So I, I wanna emphasize one thing.
Do not shut, do not shut the door.
The doors need to stay open.
The doors need to stay open, because it's an open meeting. Sorry.
Are we good?
Sorry, Steve. Yeah, I think we're good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, the good news here, it's, it's about a 1.1 and 1/4 million dollar savings, and I just wanna emphasize, this is brick and mortar savings money for infrastructure. It can't be used to pay teacher salaries or any other, uh, instructional staff or non-instructional staff costs. This is a saved fund, brick and mortar. We'll be doing more projects with these resources. So with us today is Tim Oswald, Managing Director with Piper Jaffray, who will give us more color on the sale today, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. So you have in front of you the bid summary and then the calculations of savings, and I'll walk you through the bid summary here fairly quickly. Bids were due at 11:00. Actually, it was 1:00, 1:00 PM, I'm sorry for the typo. Bids were due at 1:00. Bidding in this environment is typically electronic. People don't literally show up as they would with a construction bid. There were three bids submitted. JP Morgan out of New York, Hutchinson Shockey out of Chicago, and Hutt Top Securities out of Chicago. Interest rate, the JP Morgan bid, 1.127 percent. If you compare that to Hutshockey, 1.15, you have to go into the decimals to see a difference between one bid and the other, and there's, there's a sum total of, uh, of, uh, $12,000 difference in interest cost on their bids on a $15 million loan for five years. So they're substantially identical bids. At any rate, um, the interest rates themselves are a little bit higher than I had expected that they would be, and, and so, let me explain for a quick second. You remember when, um, when you bought your house and the mortgage broker said, would you like to pay a point in order to buy down the interest rate on, on the loan? Well, if you can pay a point, mathematically, it's, it's a wash to you. It's, it's the same cost over time. It's a game brokers play, but it's, you know, over time, it's the same cost on a present value basis. If you can pay a point, you can also buy a point. It's just the reverse of, of, of the two. And so, the interest rate, you'll see there, 3% once and 5% four times. We're not in a 5% market, we're in a 1% market. And so what's going on there? The broker who's buying the bond is turning around and selling it at a price higher than face value, 102, 103, 104 percent of face value, in order to drive down the overall cost of the loan over time. Now, I don't really care. Brokers, bidders can choose their own bidding strategy. All, all I care about's the effective overtime cost of the loan, which is 1.12. Well, how do you get from, excuse me, a 5% interest rate down to a 1% interest rate? There, remember, they're paying a, a, a dollar amount that's higher than face value, so I have to account for that dollar amount when we, when we, uh, do the final numbers runs. So what was originally advertised as a 15 million, $60,000 issue, after the bids are done, turns out to be a 13 million, 935,000 dollar issue, because there's a million-plus of premium built into the, uh, built into the bidder's bid. So after it's all done, we revise the, the payment schedule, and, and, uh, the average interest rate stays at 1.127 percent over time. And Steve's right, um, so the net, the next page has the savings calculation, and I'll just highlight that the, the savings over the five years of the bond is shown in column number five. Million 296,000 over that period of time. We like to talk about things in present value terms, because of, a dollar five years from now is worth, in theory, less than a dollar today. So on a present value basis, it's a million 244,000. Steve mentioned a million and a quarter. That's where that comes from. On a present value basis, it's a million and a quarter. These numbers are final. Um, all of the costs of legal and ratings and everything else is known and identified, so there should be no deviations at this point in, in the numbers. And, uh, this would flow into your savings, flows into your, uh, capital funds in terms of, uh, reduced costs that then can be used for other purposes. So, I can bore you with a lot more detail if you'd like. Can I stop for a second and ask if you have questions?
Certainly can. Do we have any questions?
Uh, we've reviewed the bids. Uh, you have a resolution that's been filled out and prepared by your legal counsel. Uh, the bids were, were accurate, and they, within the bidding parameters required, and we'd recommend that you award to JP Morgan.
Thank you so much. That is good news in, in the Blake. It's, uh, it's, uh, kinda nice with the shuffling of paper to be able to get a 1.2 million. Uh, again, it, it's not gonna, doesn't help with staff, doesn't help with those, but we certainly have the needs. And, uh, Steve, thank you so much for your diligence, uh, your hard work, uh, kinda going above and beyond, uh, but it's, uh, it's, it's helping, the community is helping us. So thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. Um, do we, we need a motion to approve the sale? And a second?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
And this would be a roll call vote?
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Vice President Ann Halt?
Aye.
All right. Thank you again, gentlemen. Moving on, uh, we have Board Governance, uh, the policy manual. Laura, would that be?
Yeah, if there was any questions with regards to the policies, regulations, or procedures that we proposed for your review this evening, we are happy to answer those for you.
Any questions?
They're on the five-year review, which is why they're coming to you tonight.
Right.
In particular. I have some questions.
Okay. No questions?
No questions.
That was, uh, basically an informational item, no action. Um, the rest of the meeting, just, uh, an outline, we will, at the end of business, go into a closed session, and I'm gonna ask for a motion, uh, to do that as a, uh, review of personnel. But we will have several presentations, uh, about demographics and, uh, in our buildings and facilities, and then we will move from here into the other room to a facilitated discussion, uh, about the information, uh, that we're gonna receive from this. And from there, then, we will, we will go right into closed session. So, can I have a motion, that motion for closed session, please?
This one here says, I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, April the 25th, 2016, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge, discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual request a closed session as provided in Section 21.51I of the Iowa Code.
Thank you. Um, a second?
Second.
And this requires a recall, roll call vote also.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Vice President Ann Halt?
Aye.
All right. Dr. Buck? We're gonna...
Yeah, so I give a little bit of framing here. So excited about this meeting tonight. So we've been, uh, we've been talking for a little while about taking a look at our facilities and sort of where we are in the facilities conversation in Cedar Rapids, and where we might, uh, move in, going into the future. And just as a clarification, as Gary noted, this is a little bit weird, so we just voted to go into closed session, but we're not going into closed session until after the work session, so everyone understands what happened there. So, uh, we are hearing, uh, tonight about, uh, where we are in terms of our financial position, sort of currently, as it relates to facilities. We're going to hear, um, facilities master plan update this evening, which would be great to hear, and we will also hear about enrollment. So when you think about the things that impact facilities, and you start to think about, what are some short and long-term projections that relates to what happens with our facilities in Cedar Rapids, uh, we believe we have some of the main players and main conversation points tonight. So we'll hear that information, and then, as Gary noted, we will go into a work session to talk through, uh, and process, uh, some of what is heard tonight. So with that, Steve's gonna get us kicked off, and then they'll kinda work through this as they move forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Buck, Board of Education, Vice President Gary Ann Halt. Uh, this is a bit of a trip down memory lane. If you were with us three years ago, you'll recognize this. For those who are new, we're giving a little bit of a framework on where we've been three years ago and sort of where we're at today. Uh, I want to, uh, give a lot of credit to the hard work of Shive Hattery, the district's architect of record. George Ca, George Caans, who was a staffer with Shive Hattery, was very instrumental with his efforts, as well as a lot of other Shive, uh, staff, with our first iteration of this facility master plan, and we continue to work with Shive Hattery as our, as our architect of record and our partner, with a lot of the information that you're gonna be seeing tonight, and certainly a lot of questions that you'll have answered from an architectural perspective. This is a really nice piece that shows sort of the chronological sequence from August of 12 through April of 13, and the process that we went through to create what we now have as the, uh, a bit of aging facility master plan that the Board of Education heard, and, and took the report on April of 2013. But it began in September. Uh, we had multiple people involved with this process. We had the, we call it the visioning, the instructional visioning committee. This is a committee that listened to experts from the University of Iowa, from Kirkwood Community College, uh, from our architects of record, and looked at what could possibly be, what's, what is the vision? What could we be doing in terms of facilities? Uh, and with the work of the visioning committee came a series of criteria that we used to measure the quality of proposals that we received from the campus-based leadership teams. That's a fancy term for principals and their teams at the billing level to bring forth, through the, uh, facility master plan, their vision of what they would like to see happen in their buildings, and that would be framed in the center of those five, uh, uh, rectangles, the campus-based leadership, uh, committee meeting. So we looked at those, the steering committee looked at those, another committee, uh, reviewed, and we scored these in blind. We didn't even know what facilities were submitting these proposals. They were all scored, and they were ranked, ordered, and, uh, and then we concluded with a report to the Board of Education, again, on, uh, April of 2013. This slide is designed to demonstrate the disparity between needs and resources. So we have 425 million dollars of needs that were identified in April of 2013, and they're divided three different ways. We have a 200 million dollar operations and maintenance over a 10-year period, 20 million dollars per year for operation and maintenance needs. These were identified through inventories of facility, uh, roofs, sidewalks, windows, doors, uh, electrical, plumbing. All these things have life cycles, and they all need to be replaced over time. So 20 million a year, times 10, is the identified need. Against that backdrop is the promise, the PEPAL promise, funded with a dollar 34, which is a maximum voter approved, plus a board-voted annual PEPAL levy, which brings us 90 million dollars. So you can see, we've ramped it up a notch, for sure, but when you compare that to what the identified needs are, there's a stark difference between those two. Then the center one is the total of 119 million, which represents the sum total of the campus-based leadership, uh, projects. And then looking at that as a very small number of resources, that would be the saved resources that we had three years ago, which totaled about 75 million dollars. These resources are not designed to be aligned to that dollar amount for those saved, uh, I'm sorry, for those campus-based leadership projects. This is simply comparative for demonstration purposes. If you see the bar to the right, the... simply comparative for demonstration purposes. If you see the bar to the right, the available SAVE funding for the new facilities, and the new facilities are at $106 million. These were identified, not specifically, but in general, the need for purchasing of land and construction of new facilities for enrollment growth in the future for the Cedar Rapids School District. So those numbers of funding aren't necessarily aligned specifically in that manner. You can look at this a variety of ways, but for comparative purposes, the total of SAVE funds that we had back three years ago, and I'm looking for the number here, sorry, I'm going to put my glasses on, was $74 million. $74 million of unobligated SAVE resources. So stark difference between resources and needs, $261 million of needs not funded. So I think, and just to be a bit brief about the facility master plan, it culminated in that April meeting with a series of "we takeaways" that were really the guiding principles that we would look at as we were moving forward. So the "we takeaways" were we recognize the importance of designing elementary schools for the future, looking at our core-established neighborhoods, as well as looking at the new areas to the west that will be opened with the I-100 corridor. We certainly recognize the importance of increased focus on operation and maintenance needs, and there's the $200 million identified there. We certainly, we identified that additional resources were needed to maintain, improve, and grow. We engaged and listened to our community representatives. We developed the 21st Century School concept. But of all the "we takeaways" that we had that had the most influence on what we've done from three years ago to today is the final one, that we recognize the importance of replicating best practices district-wide. So I'm going to stop with my comments here and let Rob take it from there and talk a little bit about replicating those best practices.
The best practices that came through there are listed on the, on the slide above, but it was pretty, it was pretty evident when we did the grading process that the community involvement was a big one. They wanted to have more usage out of the community in those, in our facilities. The other ones, the Student Hub and the Media Centers, we kind of joined those two projects together in trying to make a media center for today's standards. And then the security entrance was also one that, for, to protect our students and our staff in our, in our facilities. After we got, we took all of that knowledge, and we decided to go back out to our campuses and meet with our building administration. And basically, what we went out there to do is review those concepts with, with our building principals to say, how will this translate into your facilities? We also talked to the building principals about, hey, how does the building function? Does it function well? Is there some areas in the building that just are not working very well, such as, you may have had a first-grade classroom down on one side, and the other two first-grade classrooms are clear on the other side. And so we took a look at that and said, how can we improve the flow of the building with, with a remodel for that building? And with all of that, we looked at making a long-term plan. Based upon all of that, based upon the review with the building administrators and coming up and moving parts of the puzzles around, we came up with a, a master plan for each of the facilities. And I think you'll see those in your, for all of our facilities in your master plan book. There are each, each building is, is identified of having a, you know, an overall long-range plan. I think that's you, Michelle.
So part of the, part of the challenge to be able to take the conversations that we had with the individual building administrators and take it beyond just a question of what would you like, but how is, what would you like and how your building functions compared to how others across the nation are using their facilities, and how that square footage or cost should be applied to each building. And so we've taken a look at, there's several guides that we use often as architects and planners. The SEFP guide is one that was used for the 2010 study that came up with the assessment need. The, this one is a bit dated as far as the most recent updates that they've had to this. And so we've taken information from, again, the SEFP organization that we have people credentialed in to be able to compare to other districts your size across the country, and the education specs that they have created to say, here's what we are doing in addition to comparing to this. So as you look from a site comparison, you, the drawing that you see up there, it's primarily just showing the implications of security. So bus drop-off, parent drop-off, student drop-off, for that to be able to be a safe and secure traffic flow from the student from the curb to the building. And so taking that on an acre, per acre development from a cost standpoint is how, in a few slides, you'll see those numbers were estimated. The other part, as Rob mentioned, were, was the interior of that space. So if we're focusing on secure entries, and we're focusing on the efficiency use of the class, of the entire building, how do we, how do we establish numbers to those? And so, again, taking those resources and assigning a factor, you'll see those on the cost opinions that you see, and seeing how those might relate relative to how your facility is currently being used. And then assigning today dollars to how each of those square footages. So today, we are estimating a classroom, you might have an 800-square-foot classroom, that today needs to be more like 1,100 or 1,200 square feet. How does that, how does that implication go across the building into the cost opinion? Then we have a summary in there as well that then projects out for the next 10 years. So today's dollars, if you had the money today to fund it, here's what it would cost, knowing that costs will not increase over time, or not decrease over time, that how those, what that would look like in a 10-year. The chart that you see up here is a summary of all 33 buildings for the district. The coloration on those, we, and taking a look at what your next steps would be for this information, take, look at the capacity for each building as well. So the buildings that you see in yellow there are at 80% capacity. 80% capacity is considered full, to be able to have the flexibility to run the programs that you want to have. The green are 90, 85 above, and then 90, or the red is in 90. So the red district, or buildings that are identified there are in greatest need, or are exceeding their capacity. And so that, again, just providing different information to be able to look at this, whenever you compare this to the study that was done in 2010, as well as the numbers that you're using for PEPAL dollars as well.
It, it looks like Cleveland, didn't you see yellow was 80% or higher in capacity? You have them listed at 71% and in yellow.
That's a good catch. That needs to be a different color than that required.
Okay. I was just, helping me to understand if I was reading it right. Thank you.
So you recognize these three, these three bars, these three segments? The, the operations and maintenance costs were $200 million are now down to $110 because we've taken $90 million of those costs over and placed them in those identified projects. So now we have a better fit, certainly with the funding for our promise, and our needs are still a little bit higher. We've seen now a major increase in our identified projects category, which has its roots in those campus-based leadership projects. But now, we've reviewed them again, and with Michelle's work with SHIVE Hattery and other staff at SHIVE Hattery, and Rob and his folks, we've taken another look at those, the best practices, that theme that came out of that first iteration of the facility master plan, and now they're quantified, and you can see the disparity between the numbers that you, that we have there. In the third category, $116 million is simply a 3%, 3% to 4% increase in construction inflation over the last three years, from the $106 million that you saw previous, to provide at least a placeholder for what represents new cost to the school district in the future. So we had a disparity of 200, I believe it was 261, $281 million previously. Now you see that that gap has grown to $295 million. We've seen an increase in our cost for facilities and maintenance, but we've also seen a decline from about $74 million to $62 million in our SAVE fund because of other district obligations to SAVE over the last three years. So those create this increased gap between our needs and our ability to fund those needs. So this is just a little information for, for, for you to consider. We have three sources of funding for infrastructure, essentially, and our PEPAL fund, our PEPAL funding is maxed out. We've done as much as we can with our PEPAL funding through the $1.34 maximum that we have for the next 10 years. The SAVE funding, the unobligated balance of $62 million certainly can be used in part for infrastructure investment. At this time, it is not obligated to any specific kind of project. This is all wide open for, for, certainly for the board's consideration and discussion. The area that we have in the past, it was December the 12th, 2000, we had at that time a $46 million bond issuance that was the state's largest for a public school in Iowa. And it was a 73% approval with a 60% majority required, a supermajority required. So bond issues are a possibility, and these are just some examples that, that you have in front of you as a possibility. $2.70 is a number that's, that's put out there because it is, it is, it is the one that will generate $184 million through our debt service levy. The 405 is placed out there because it is the maximum amount that we can have approved by the voters. If we had a $4.05 levy rate, we'd have to have two questions on the ballot. We would have to have the question of whether or not we want to raise and can have the levy raised to $4.05. And secondly, we would have the question on whether the, the committee would support a bond issuance at the level of $281 million. So it's, it's, it would be quite a, having two questions on the ballot makes it more difficult than one question on the ballot with $2.70. But it simply demonstrates for, for you the value of, of the money that we would be able to generate with those kinds of bond issuances. And those would be 30-year commitments. These are both based on a 30-year commitment of time. So I think that concludes our comments. I think that perhaps Rob Schwartz with RSP, or do we?
So you want to talk a little bit about capacity? Is that the next thing? So do you guys have any questions about any of that? So basically, it's, you establish what you might think of as like standard of care. So you say, there's going to be secure entrance, administration moved to the front, I mean, all those pieces. If you do that, you do HVAC, and what else am I forgetting? ADA?
ADA.
Then you arrive at that number, and that's what we have for each of the schools, put together by our friends at SHIVE. So, yeah, okay.
Capacity. I know Michelle brought it up, and we also brought it up during the facility review with administrators, that we have a standard capacity for each one of our facilities. And when we were talking to building administrators, we said, and we use that capacity as a judgment to whether we put an addition on or not, when we did our facility master plan study with the building administrators. And we showed, a lot of our facilities were showing we had capacity in our, in our buildings. And, and talking to the building principals, going through the process, they said, well, if you can find a classroom, we can put those kids in, go for it. It's just not there. And so we had, we did a little more research into it and said, well, there is two types of capacity is what we're looking at. We have a functional capacity, and that's basically, and I'll show you an example here in a second, but it's taking the number of classrooms that we have and multiplying it by 25 students. That's where you come up with our typical capacity. Then there's the educational capacity, and that, and that really gets into a little more detail as far as how we use our facilities. We have standard classrooms that are available in our facilities, but we also use some classrooms a little differently, such as special ed, preschools, kindergarten. They all have less capacity in them. And so we took, we took, we have a functional capacity, but now we also have some educational capacity. And I'll give you an example, a couple of examples here. Hiawatha, the green are the, are just our standard classrooms. That's what we have available at Hiawatha. We take those classrooms times 25 students, and we've got five, we've got room for 575 kids in that building. That's one way to look at it. Now, let's talk about reality. We have educational capacity. Really, we only have 17 classrooms that are available for, to teaching at, at Hiawatha. We have three kindergarten classrooms, which has a lower student count, and we have a couple of special ed classrooms in there at seven students per classroom. So we get, if, when we, when we take all the numbers and get, do all of the homework with it, we come up with a total capacity for your educational capacity at 502. And so that is a little different than their, the functional capacity. So our current enrollment at 554, you know, we would be within our, if we used the 80% rule that SHIVE has instructed us to use, we will be well into, this building would be considered crowded for, for the purposes of a capacity. Another example of right, we have 17 classrooms at 25 students. We got 425 is our functional capacity. In reality, we have 11 classrooms, three kindergarten rooms, couple preschool rooms, a special ed room. Our total capacity for educational purposes is 385, with enrollment of 325. This one, too, would fit into that 80% rule. Our last one was one that I, you know, that caught me off guard, and we're in the process of gathering all of this information, but we look at Johnson Elementary, or Johnson, well, that's not elementary, but over at Johnson, we've got 18 classrooms. So we should have a functional capacity of 450. Educational capacity, we have a total capacity of 388 over at Johnson, but our current enrollment is at 395. That building's pretty full, and there's not much room left in there for additional kids. So we're in the process of putting all of this together. There's some more information will come together for this. I'm hoping we can have that ready to go around June, have this all done and completed. So.
Any more questions? No. Say none?
I have a question. When we look at these capacities, you know, we're looking at a building in an ideal situation. Many of our buildings are not ideal. You know, they got retrofitted HVAC, they got retrofitted electrical in the room, and all those factors that are, you know, poor insulation. At what point do we start to really ask the question, how much more money do we put into these old bones? And are we really looking forward enough as, as we budget for these to say, you know, in this neighborhood, this school needs to be replaced because functionally, structurally, it's worn out? If we asked a lot of people that are graduating from college to work in a facility like that, a lot of them would look to another job area or district, and that's what's going on in education today. Are we given enough consideration of what those buildings really are?
Well, I think that-
I'm asking the architect.
Okay, go for it. It's all yours.
You had a breath taken there. I'll let you go first.
I'm not a politician, and I don't pretend to be one. I just look at this, and I ask the question, what is the will of the board and the community in the matter of our facilities? We recognize that spending nearly the full cost of a new elementary building on an existing one to repair it isn't probably the best investment of public resources. There's got to be a better way. But how do we navigate that, that pathway to get us to where we should be? I think we recognize this. We're, we're offering a framework here to engage in a, in a conversation with the board on what we do going forward, and I think we recognize that, Keith, for-
We got to let the public know it. We got to get the word out there that, that these buildings have served their- We gotta get the word out there that, that these buildings have served their lives in a lot of ways, and that if we want enrollment to grow, we have to have attractive facilities. And I hear people that are even older than I am say, well, that was a new building back then. Kennedy High School was forty years ago, you know, and the other high schools are even older than that. So, yeah, they were new buildings when they were going to school. They're not today. And I, I just think we gotta be more forward thinking.
Yeah, so when we get into the work session tonight, we're going to consider some things, and, um, uh, we're going to consider, should we keep moving along like has been sort of the plan? So this, we have this plan, and that's the numbers that Steve talked about in the beginning. Uh, should we take a look at another community conversation? And there might be a different, a couple of different committees we would consider potentially to have that community conversation. But does the board want to give some direction about a community conversation about this very issue? Because when you start to dig into this notebook that you have, and you're talking about eight, nine million dollars to do, uh, the upgrades we're describing here, but in many cases won't touch any of the classrooms, for example?
Right.
And you're talking a three hundred and fifty student facility and spending eight or nine million dollars to bring a portion of it up to where we want it? And a new three hundred and fifty student facility, I hate to guess the number because I'll do it wrong, ten or twelve million dollars? So you're talking ten or twelve million dollars for a three hundred and fifty student facility that's new, and nine million to get it to where, uh, these things we've identified as important but may not even touch most of the classrooms? I think that's the conversation, I, we agree, that's the conversation we need to have. So, um, what might that conversation look like and how might it? Or, or, I mean, one thing is we can just hold, but the challenges are real, yeah.
Right. Uh, as we go into that work session, I think it is going to allow us to have more discussion. We won't make any, uh, we can't do any board policy or decisions at that point, but, uh, we can lay the framework for future meetings, uh, as we move in. Good points, Keith. Yeah, sure.
And I brought this up before. Who are we kidding on the SAFE funds, solid funds, whatever you want to call it, when we're giving back essentially a portion back to taxpayer, which we, we agreed we would do, but, but today, the picture has gotten different, and all we're doing is, uh, putting off that's going to cost us more later. And that's a joke to the taxpayer in my mind, that we say, we'll basically stay at this levy rate, won't increase it, and use that money because it's just growing on us. I think we seriously need to consider that.
Yeah, the two dollar amount slides, whether you, whether you look at this as a PEPAL promise slide of a, of a eleven million dollar gap annually between what we're doing and taking in and what the needs are growing, or you look at the second slide where they come more into alignment, but that's because you've shifted all the costs to a different slide, which is these things we're describing in this notebook. At the end of the day, it's still four hundred million dollars short on the needs of the district for our facilities. Yeah.
That grows exponentially.
Yeah, and to your point, it's growing at whatever we, three percent to three percent a year at least as we don't take action, so.
And, uh, there's a legislative act that could happen with, uh, removing the sunset of the, of the SAFE at twenty twenty-nine that would help us as we're moving forward too with the ability to, to be able to look at bonding or building. So that could play, uh, and also a key in all of this. Any, any other questions? Good comments, Keith. I think we have another report.
Rob's here to talk enrollment projections for us, because, of course, enrollment projections impact this facility conversation.
This is the report that he's-
This is the, this handout that you have?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Will Rob bring some good news for us, please?
I was hoping you wouldn't say that.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think many of you remember when, uh, we started working with you all, uh, the last time we were here presenting to the board, it was closing schools. And if you remember, uh, that was one of the efforts for cost savings. Um, here we are in two thousand and sixteen and sitting through, um, declining enrollments, uh, funding at the state, and then you're, you're posed with a similar situation, right? Well, what I'm going to be presenting to you tonight is, is what's going on with your enrollment, and we'll capture some of the things that are related to what's going on with enrollments, demographics, developments, and then how that relates to what your projections could be. Uh, as you are aware, and for the benefit of those people listening into this conversation, we've done quite a bit of work, um, with your community, and, uh, we only work with school districts. We work through the Midwest. Um, I've sat through many different meetings here of late, districts in your similar situation where you're having declining funds. You are the majority, um, in, in Iowa when we talk about enrollment and a potential declining enrollment. You're more likely to decline than you are to see an increase. So we'll talk about that, some strategies, some things we're seeing with your numbers. In order for us to do what we've been able to do digitally, um, there's a lot of communities that have provided us input, the counties giving us different data sets. We appreciate their input in all of this because without those data sets, we couldn't critically strategically look at what's happening in your district and have the level of accuracy that we'll talk about here later in the projection, but a tool that will help you plan for what the future could look like in your community. So there's three things that I want you to take away from this presentation. And the first is about enrollments, is we're projecting your enrollment as we go out five years to be about a hundred students fewer than it is today. And, uh, we'll get into some of those details, how that happens. Um, basically, at the, uh, elementary level, we're showing a slight increase. At the middle school, a slight increase, but at the high school, there's a decrease. And as we get into the projections, we'll see how this all plays out. So a slight enrollment decrease. We also know that there's a lot of development opportunities when we have that one hundred bypass completed, and what that opens up to the north and to the west. So we've started to factor what that could mean for your community. But what you have to understand is you have more housing inventory, more units that are already built now, that we're seeing some sort of demographic shifts, and we'll come back to what that means, uh, for your demographics. The third element is you heard that your capacity is being, uh, reanalyzed as it fits into the functional or educational capacity. That will help relate to some of the questions that I just heard spoke. What, what do you start planning for some of these areas of your community where maybe the cost of the building is such that it's maybe reached its usefulness? What's happening with some of the demographics? Are we, uh, needing to have neighborhood schools? What is the right size of a building to, uh, provide the right experience for students in those neighborhoods? Those are all questions that our data sets, um, will be able to assist when you get to that level. So starting at that a hundred thousand foot view, we had to understand where the district is. So this map, uh, the purple line, the unusual shape you have is your district boundary. Um, the solid colors are the city limits that are in or, uh, beyond, uh, what your district boundary is, but somehow have some sort of influence on what's occurring in your district, so the geography. We then have the current elementary attendance areas. So what I want you to think about is we've taken this pie and we're slicing this pie up into smaller pieces. We also are looking at your existing middle school attendance areas, and then as well, your existing high school attendance areas. So that's, that's the, the initial pieces of the pie, but we go a little bit further. We look at them from the planning area. So what type of development is occurring in your community? So is it single family? Is it duplexes, apartments, mobile homes? Um, those all have different yield rates, and I'm going to come back to that term, yield rate, here in a moment, but we're looking at what's happening with developments, demographics, and enrollment change at these small planning areas, and there's a little over seven hundred planning areas, I believe, in your community that we're monitoring this. So if we zoom in a little bit tighter, what, what does this all mean when you look at these data sets? And so when we zoomed in here to Arthur Elementary, what you can see on this particular slide is the aerial, so the, the visual of what, what's on the ground or in the ground right there. The green line representing the planning areas, and you can faintly see parcels, but more importantly, you see these dots. These are the students that are geocoded. The larger the dot, the greater the grade. You'll notice that there's many places where we may have multiple dots. That means there's multiple children living in that household. So all of this, again, tying back to all of this data with what's going on with the parcels, what type of unit it is, um, what the value is, um, when it was built, all of that information to understand what's uniquely happening in each of these planning areas. So drilling a little bit deeper into the data, um, how we do our modeling is this sophisticated forecast model. Um, what I want you to take from this is different things are happening in different places in your community in each of these planning areas. Depends on what city it is, the value of the home, um, what amenities are in or around those particular planning areas. What you really need to take from this formula is, if you think where you live, if there's five kindergartners that live in your subdivision, your planning area, in five years, how does that change? Does it increase, decrease, remain the same? We take that a little bit further when we're looking at the building areas, the new growth areas. We're trying to match that to a similar housing product in your community and what that potential yield rate could be as it builds out at fifty percent, seventy-five percent. But again, the same type of methodology. What's in all of that information is, um, cohort growth. So if we have a thirteen hundred size kindergarten, how does that change over time? I'll show you what that has been, um, here in a moment. External growth, so what is the new people moving into the community, or what is open enrollments coming into your district, or what is the enrollment loss that you see from year to year for outmigration? Kindergarten change, are we going to go towards eleven hundred students? Does it go up towards fourteen hundred students? There's a lot of different variables that we're looking at to try to determine what that number could be. Then there's the economy. This is probably the biggest factor of influence. If you have jobs, you have employment growth, there's the potential for you to see positive enrollment change. Um, tied into that is the condition of the housing inventory and what the price of that housing inventory is, as well as where we're going to be seeing new development. We'll talk about some of those here in a few slides. On this particular slide, I won't read each of these bullet points, but you have to understand there's different things happening in these seven hundred planning areas, and each of these items has an impact on what you may see for enrollment in each of those planning areas. So if we start with where we've been and where we are with your enrollment, what you're going to see on this particular table is, if you go back to two thousand, two thousand and one, and you look at your kindergarten class, just a little bit under thirteen hundred students. If you look at your kindergarten class, uh, for this current school year with the data that we were sent, just a little bit over thirteen hundred students. So you see, between two thousand and two thousand fifteen, sixteen, you see some years where it's greater than that, you see some other years where it's going to be less than that. Another thing that I want you to take from this slide that you start to understand what potentially happens with your enrollment, is when we look at that senior class, last year, about one thousand one hundred fifty students, and when we compare that to your incoming kindergarten class of about thirteen hundred students, that's a positive increase of students. And so that would maybe say, hey, you're going to see some positive enrollments increases in your district. So this is where we were a little bit optimistic, looking at the numbers. But when we look at the numbers a little bit greater detail of what that change is from this, that previous slide, you can see there's some years, um, as we cohort from like kindergarten to first grade, we see a significant decrease in students. Or when we go from eighth to ninth grade, a significant increase. Overall, when we look at some of these trends with that data, you see the bottom two lines of a three-year average in a three-year weighted average. It shows that there's overall a decrease. So this is, in essence, it's kind of negative to see that there's a decrease in the enrollment overall from year to year as you look at this cohort change. But the positive of this is there's a reason why these students may not be here. We don't know that specifically in the data, but we know there's trends that are happening, and there's trends that are happening at each of those planning areas. So if some of these things are potentially resolved, um, with facility improvements, with programs that the people who are moving to the community want to continue to use, um, we could see some of these change. In fact, one of them that has been a positive, and we get into the projection accuracy where we missed, was you saw a reduction in what the decrease is from kindergarten to first grade from last year to this year. So that's, that's a positive trend. Um, not a trend yet, it's actually a positive data point. Do we see that continuing to be less in future years than it would become a trend? So this data is, again, that hundred thousand foot view. So as we look at what's happening throughout your district, going back to where students reside, where these planning areas are, we look at the in-migration. So who was new to the district in fifteen sixteen that was not here in fourteen fifteen as a kindergarten through eleventh grader? The dots that you see here illustrate that it's all over your district for new students, and there's roughly almost seventeen hundred new students that weren't here last year. And, uh, that, that's a positive trend, but that also gets into another word, transancy, that when we look at the outmigration of students, um, we have about fourteen hundred students that were here last year but not in the district this year, or not receiving a service this year. They may still live here in the community, but they may be choosing a different option, like homeschool, private school, parochial school. The majority of these students probably don't live here anymore, but we don't see that in the data. We just know they're not here, they're not receiving a service. Where are they? And we're trying to track, again statistically, where are they in some of these planning areas? And are we seeing an area that may be re-greening, where there's more students? Are we seeing an area where it's graying, where there's fewer students? So that's migration. A, a lot of transancy when, when you look at your total enrollment and you see that there's, you know, roughly three thousand either students leaving or coming into the district. Some other data that we look at is not as granular as the planning areas, but we look at where the zero to four-year-old population estimates are from census in two thousand twenty. This is important because this ties into one of the demographic groups that we really, and I say we, there, nobody really understands what their choices will be, and that's the millennials. There are some things we know with millennials, tend to not buy homes, cars, and there's even a tendency that they may not even own their clothes, um, may actually lease their clothes. So there's some different things with these millennials that we're trying to track on what does that mean with where, I was waiting for you guys to laugh, where, where, where they will live and what that means. We know they have high standards with what they want to see for the amenities of, of where they live. And so when you start looking at some of these other maps that I show you is, it, does the city of Cedar Rapids have the type of housing that they may want to have and raise their children? That, those are bigger questions, questions that even the city is trying to figure out, things that the city is doing with some of their infill developments to be able to attract that particular type or that demographic. So on this, what you see in this map, the red areas illustrate from census where they think the greatest density of zero to four-year-olds would be. So this is good to know that basically on that one fifty-one corridor, that spine through there, you can see, that's where we see the greatest, uh, potential zero to four-year-old population with census data. We also look at that female population with the cohort of fifteen to fifty-nine. I don't want to suggest the fifteen-year-olds or those of you who are closer to fifty should have kids, but it's a way to kind of break down that cohort and understand how does that relate to zero to four-year-olds? Because again, some other demographic data that we do know is people are waiting longer to have children, and they tend to have fewer children. Now, there's some exceptions as we get into some of the different subgroups, some of the different socioeconomics as we look through your district, but those are some generalities of, of what that may mean for, for data. Again, very similar to what we see with the zero to four-year-olds. That's, um, uh, again, a way to start calibrating what we may see in the future. So if we look at your actual data in these planning areas, the, the planning areas are a different size, and because they're a different size, we wanted to equalize what does that mean for a potential yield rate, a way for you to think about where are these kids in your district? Um, we've weighted them equally based on if each of these planning areas was a square mile. And then where you see the red areas, that's where we see the greatest density of students. This is, at looking at the K-12, as you radiate out to the blues and the purples, it gets less. Um, some things that start to showcase here is where we see some of the newer developments, um, we see a little bit of, uh, uptick in them being closer to those oranges and reds. Another way to look at this data, and this is probably our most popular visual of where students are, is this heat map. So basically, all of the students, they're geocoded, and, um, where are we seeing the, the greatest clustering of students? And again, this is where, if we go, I believe, into the Kenwood Elementary area, you can see that- see that large red dot just south of 151 and east of the river. We see some clusters where this may assist when you start to look at things a little bit in greater detail about your facility, like what are the conditions, what are the types of students, where are the students? Those may start to become some of those best planning practices of where you want to reinvest your dollars if certain values come into play. And just so you know, all these maps will be providing the district, they're on 11 by 17, so as I see you looking at your map going, it is a little bit larger and the PDF, but this is sized so it fits on the presentation, but the 11 by 17 is much, much easier to pick out. So that's some of the, where the students are. And now I'm going to move into a little bit about some of the development discussion and won't hit all of these bullet points, but I want you to know that we know there's changes in the housing market. If you remember after the flood, there was a lot of discussion about what would happen with redevelopment around Hiawatha Elementary. There was a lot of discussion about the future of that facility. What will happen? As you drive out there, you see there's still some desire, there's still some need for some of those empty lots to be improved upon. So we're not maybe meeting some of the expectations of what was thought in specific areas. No fault of maybe any particular person or entity, it's just what things are and what that means to recovering areas. We also look at some of where the new Platts are emerging, where we're seeing potential development opportunities, particularly as we talk about the 100 bypass, where the infrastructure is going to be. That literally is a major clue in understanding where we see some of these developments, along with who owns some of the land, what the city is planning in their comprehensive plan. That's very large in understanding what potentially will be there. Doesn't mean that's the way it will be, but at least sets some of the framework for what there could be. I've been speaking a little about, a little bit about some of these demographic trends. I've mentioned millennials, but we have the other flip side. Some of you may find yourself there, the baby boomers. What happens is they move on to other housing choices. We may see some re-greening and that's all going to be dependent on the condition of the housing inventory, is it two-story, is it single-family, and so on. So again, some of the enrollment trends I've already been speaking about, and then the capacity of facilities, that will be a large driver in what you can see for enrollments for the educational programming that needs to take place in each of these buildings. So that'll be an important piece when it's finished. A little bit of some information to give you, kind of again, some baseline, is when we look at this particular table, we have the green line which represents the population census estimates, the blue line which represents the building activity based on what was provided by the county, and then the red line represents the population of the district, what that changes. And so you can see really none of them really correlate with anything and that kind of makes a little bit of sense. If you think about this, I mentioned that we have a little over 700 areas that we're monitoring, the enrollment demographics and developments. Things are changing at different rates in each of those areas. So we look at this, some of the positive takeaways. Census is showing population increase, the blue line showing that there's building activity. So those are positive things, but with your enrollment, we're seeing some different oscillations where as we go back three and four years, we were seeing quite a bit of enrollment decrease. So again, baseline data, kind of a little mixed perception of what does all those three different variables mean. This particular map shows really how things have been built out and what's really neat when you see this blown up on a large map is you can see how different areas of the community have built out when we were seeing that particular activity in those particular areas. Again, just to give a sense of where development has happened and how that looks over the last five years. All of this different information that you've heard me talk about, whether it's zoning, future land use, existing land use, where things are built, helps us create these growth areas. And we've classified them in three different areas or time periods. We have the green, the things that are happening now. We have the yellow, which are things that could happen as early as this year, but likely within the next five years. And then the orange, what could happen is we get closer to five years and beyond. Huge caveat to this map, once we create this map based on all the different data sets, everything that we've heard, it may change based on the market conditions, who owns the lands and what they think could be built. So this is kind of a framework for you to understand that the model is saying there's going to be some activity and generally where we may be seeing some of that activity, but it may not be so specific as those particular parcels of land developing. And the reason for that is twofold. One, we have to have people who own the land that want to develop, and the second is whatever they build has to have a market. If we have those two things, we have good things happening in the building arena. And part of what drives people to move to areas is the quality of schools and the programming those parents feel their children will be able to get. So everything kind of all ties together. Zoomed in here to show you some of the values based on what we've received, I believe, from the county. And what's interesting about this is when you layer where the kids are and what the value of homes are, it starts to give you an understanding of where we potentially could see some of this re-greening. So we've zoomed into generally, I believe it's the Jackson, Madison, Harrison area. And the blue areas represent the most affordable area. So basically, as we get in this particular area, closer to the river, it becomes more affordable. As we look at the orange and red, those are the higher value, assessed values in the district. So again, just another way of you looking at some of the information, this was factored in when we did a lot of the realignment of your boundaries years ago, looking at what that makeup could be in some of the communities, what this means as we see some of the re-greening or graying. It froze up here. All right, so I won't read each of the development conclusions, but basically, there's some activity and we're expecting that as we get the bypass completed and as we get out to that year's three and five, we potentially could see a lot of other development opportunities that could start to augment some of the decreases in inventory or yield rate of students. And let me give you some perspective, is I believe a stat that I wrote down. When we were looking at what this really means is back in 2000, I think there was a little over 47,000 units in your community. And here in 2015, we have about 53,000. So an increase, right? That sounds great. Well, when we look at your yield rate back in 2000, there was about 34 students for every 100 units, and now there's about 30 students for every 100 units. So you've increased in your inventory, but you're seeing fewer students that are coming into, receive services from your district. So that's kind of a cap of enrollment and development. So what does this mean with the projections? So pretty reasonable model from what we projected last year and with the amount of transancy, the amount of different development and where it's happening, the re-greening and graying, at the elementary level, we were a little over 98% accurate. Middle school, almost 100% accurate. Same thing at the high school and then so for the whole district, about 99% accurate. Where, going back, where we missed the elementary was really the trend that we were seeing of triple digits decreases from kindergarten to first was less. And that's really where the bulk of where we missed is we're looking at this by grade, where were those offages? So that's a positive uptake there, uptick. So as we look at what this means for your projections, I said overall, the district as we get out to 2021 sees a decrease. So what you see on this particular slide is the past elementary, middle school and high school enrollment are the nice primary colors of red, blue and green. Purple line represents what that total aggregate is for each of those three grade levels. You can see that there's years in the past where you were over 17,000 K-12 students. And you can see here, this year, we have about 15,800 roughly. You can see by 2021, you've dropped to under 15,700. You can also see on this with our projections, slight increase in what your enrollment is at the elementary level. At the middle school, you can see a slight increase, but the big decrease is at the high school. That's where if you go back to the table where we show it by grade, you can see that we have some smaller grades that are going to work their way into the high school. And we also see some enrollment trends. If they don't change in the high school, where we see decreases, I believe, from 10th to 11th and 9th to 10th, if those can be reversed, we may have a different outcome at the high school level. So I think there are some positive things where maybe we don't hit that decrease at the high school based on some of the programming changes like Think Big and other things you're doing in those high schools. Those may result in having less drop in students in some of those grades. The last few slides, I won't get into much detail other than explaining what is on here and what value this will have when the capacities are updated. So when you look at this particular table, and there's a series of, I think, three or four slides that kind of has broken it down so that you can see it better by building, is as you move from the left to the right, you can see we're showing the past enrollment three different ways. The first is reside, since we have these attendance boundaries and we know where the students live, how many students in a particular area actually are residing in that building. The second way we look at this is the attend. So from the student data that the district provides us, what students are actually attending that facility. The third way that we look at the data is do they reside and actually attend that facility based on that boundary? So if we just go alphabetically, we're looking at Arthur Elementary. Reside, we know in 1516, there were 330 K-5 students. We know that there's 344 that were attending, but if we look at those that resided and attended, we have 277 of the 330. So if we initially looked at this just as reside or attend, you'd say go from 330 to 344, wow, we saw just a slight uptick of 14 students. We actually saw the difference of the 277 to 344. And that's a positive if you're a parent and you want to have some flexibility in which students or which school your student would attend. Makes it a little more challenging when we get into some of the staffing implications of seeing some of these shifts like this. So you can see that by each of the buildings for the past three school years. As we move forward, we show you that likely projection two ways, as reside and then as attend. And so the next five years, you can see in that green color font is reside, and then the blue color font is the same five years, but as attend. And there's going to be a difference. What we've tried to do with the attend is looked at that latest school year and said, you know what, that's the best data of really understanding some of the flow, student choice between buildings. How does that maybe play out with what we see in the number of students in those buildings? This is why when we look at the reside and attend, the totals end up being the same as an aggregate at the elementary, the middle school and the high school. The other advantage of this particular table is you can see those past three years. How does that then relate as we look going forward in time? Some schools, sometimes you're like, wow, I didn't expect that it would decrease, or I thought it would increase. A lot of it goes back to the cohorts. We may have some large fifth grade classes being replaced by smaller kindergarten or even the converse of that. So that's what you see on the next few slides with each of those buildings. Really, the last few things is kind of the next steps. The capacity piece is really the next big element. Once that's known and then you start applying that to what's occurring at the building, you'll get a better understanding of maybe some different solutions might result in cost savings, might result in where you're going to allocate some of your dollars, but that's really the big piece to bring to life, the value of having the study done of what enrollment will do, whether we're talking the district, the grade levels or down at the building level. With that, I open up to maybe questions you have.
Keith?
What demographics do you have on when you build a new school in a new neighborhood versus building a new school in existing neighborhood of what happens to the attendance of that school?
Excellent question, and it depends on some different variables. If we're talking about building a new school out in, let's say, emerging new growth areas or we're talking about an infill situation, some of that's going to get into, and I'll start with the new development. If we have new developments and you're a developer, that's a good selling point to say you have that facility and it's a neighborhood school. Typically, we see how fast those lots go, tend to be quicker than other places where it's not there. Even in your community of Viola Gibson, we saw that, right? As those developments came online, we saw a lot of new families, saw a large number of students, young age households that moved into those areas. We talk about an infill area, we could see a lot of opportunity where you can change some perceptions that buildings may have. You can provide maybe better linkages to different things, whether it's amenities, city services. So there could be a lot of positive aspects that may fit into a greater program that the cities themselves are trying to do with some of the re-greening or maybe rehab of some of the existing housing conditions. But in general, we would see a positive aspect with infill or new, just because of what that may mean to perceptions and just the vibrancy of what a new building is. It is.
I'm looking, I'm looking forward to the 11 by 14.
And I spent a little more time talking with you this evening because it has been several years since you understood or heard what the model is, and I thought it was probably important for you to see that there's more than just saying you've decreased or you've increased by point whatever at each particular grade. There's a lot more that's kind of happening to get you what you need.
This is basically a static model, but could you provide some suggestions to us and how we can change the curve up, not down, you know? This can be changed. So I want to know in your experience, what has worked in communities to change that curve upward?
Great question, and some of it is going to come with collaborative efforts with the city.
I'd like, you know, more thought in a written format, if that's possible.
Oh, absolutely.
So that, you know, we can take that, digest it and then start doing checkmarks of what are we really doing as a school district to change that curve upward?
And some of that discussion, we'll also need to incorporate with the city, I think, and we're all working together because some of it, we can't do alone. It's what the city is going to be doing with infrastructure and what they see as potential. But good questions. Well, see, yeah, sure.
So, you know, kind of what you were discussing about the infill and housing stock and what opportunities might exist, you know, when we look at, you know, existing neighborhoods. One question that I had, and I guess I didn't see it reflected anywhere in here, when you look at transient students, when you look at homeless populations, kids that are doubled up or kids that might not have had residence or something that could be reportable, how are they factored in?
There are several ways. If their address of, whether it's a group home or wherever the record is for an address for that homeless student is, if we have a physical location, then they're going to fit into what a planning area is. If they do not, they then fall into what we would call our non-geographic planning areas, and this classifies those that are not in your district boundary or those that fit a condition like this or their addresses such that it's incomplete. We look at what that trend has been with those type of students and that's applied into these numbers. I imagine there's probably some field that we have with the student data that would even further hone in on those particular type of students to even answer that question in greater detail.
Okay.
So, thank you again. I think at this point, we're going to move to the other room.
Cedar County, B.C.
Okay. And we will, from there, we will go into closed session. So at this point, we are done with the formal agenda. Don't forget to fill out...